Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. It's June 17, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
Excellent.
A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to enter executive session for personnel?
Make a motion we enter into executive session.
Oh, good.
I'll second it.
Excellent. A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. McCall. All in favor? Unanimous. We'll be right back, guys. Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
I will make a motion to exit executive session.
A motion by Mr. McCall, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel? A, 1 through 37; B, 1 through 38; C, 1 through 22. Motion by Mr. Usherwood, second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting. It's June 17. We're going to start with the pledge, so if you could join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good evening. We've got a relatively short agenda, so we will get right to it. First up is Dr. Josh Lowe with recognitions of retiring leaders.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Jeff Chaney, who joined Forsyth County Schools from 2006. During that time, he was a principal at South Forsyth High, North Forsyth High, and was a founding principal at East Forsyth High. So, he had the multiple communities. Now, he spent the last couple years working for school safety, but I want to recognize Jeff. Thank you for contributions to Forsyth County Schools and to our community as well. Thank you.
Congratulations on presenting. Thank you for presenting. You've got to get a picture in here. We're in the middle there.
There he is. Thank you, Mr. Short.
Next up, we have public participation on agenda items. I believe we don't have anyone signed up, so we are set for a short recess, which I don't think we need, so we will move right on to the consent agenda. Have the members received all the documentation for their consent agenda? Any questions, comments? Nope? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Unanimous.
And, Mr. Valdez, just to make a mention of those consent agenda items, they're on there for approval, so that should the budget pass, then we can fly into action with those. But I just want to make clear that everybody in our team knows that none of those get processed unless the budget passes.
You heard that, guys. All right. That brings us into the presentation and discussion portion of the agenda. First item, Dr. Josh Lowe again. Local School Council annual reports.
You have before you three different sheets, and for the sake of time, I know you've had a chance to review these. I won't click through and read them to you, but it actually details elementary, middle, and high schools, specifically feedback from local school councils to the board as a year in summary. With those, I do want to share that we've had a strong year of engagement with our local school councils. It began in the fall, last fall, when I presented a in-person training for local school council members. For anyone that had not already been through that, that was recorded, and it has been posted, shared online, and sent to our principals to share with our local school council members that may have missed that training. So, everyone's had a chance to go through that, learn bylaws, learn actually what the local school council is there for, and so forth. It's been reported to us that all LSCs met four times this year, or more in many cases, and that all actually this year had vertical team meetings, which is an increase in previous years in terms of LSCs that did that. I will say that that's the plan again this coming year for all to meet. I think that gives us a chance to have all groups together to talk about a variety of things that may be pertinent to each community. So, that's the plan going into fall, is for all to have at least one of those again this coming year. If you look through the sheets, and once again, I know you've had an opportunity to have those to review, they have a variety of topics, but some of the common themes are school safety, code of conduct, allotments, enrollment staffing, grading and assessment guidelines, and House Bill 340, which, as I know you're aware, is essentially looking at cell phones and things of that nature. I do want you to know that all of the recommendations of these reports come from our LSCs, so some of them may or may not be specific to what the principal of the school requests, but it does shed light on the request of members of the local school council, and that's what's been submitted to you. If you read through, you'll see that the majority of the things listed are new because our team has worked with you in the past or with board members in the past to address concerns that were brought forth in past years, to ensure that things that could be handled or addressed have been. And I wanted you to know that all the reports reflective of all schools in Forsyth County, everybody did submit or had the opportunity to submit feedback, so nobody was excluded. And just in closing, our staff stands ready to partner with you to address these recommendations as you may determine necessary and provide feedback to principals to share with local school councils by the time school starts in the fall. So, I'll take any questions, and if there are none, that's all I have to share on that.
I was going to say, I think one thing that's important, because we're going to talk about it here in a minute, is that we had several, I noticed there were several of our high schools and middle schools that, you know, it sounds like they really want to, they agree with what we're, I think, we're going to be doing with cell phones and limiting technology in classrooms. So, I think it's good that we're getting that support, that they submitted that to us through the local school councils.
Yes, sir. Any other comments?
Questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Next up, my personal favorite portion of the meeting, our finance report with Mr. Larry Hamill.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to review the May 2025 financial statements. We've added some additional slides tonight we're going to present to you for the first time and see if you enjoy the graphs we're presenting to you. I know in the past, I've talked about the differences between years and stuff, so we thought we'd add some graphs to give it more of a visual for you to look at. All right. We always keep Board Go Five in mind. So, at beginning of May, we started about $236 million in cash equivalents. The receipts and payroll are normal for this time of year, when in the month, about $211.5 million. With this graph here, it's a comparison from July to through May. As you can see, we've talked about this in the past, you know, where we start off the year low in funds, both at the cash position and fund balance position. As you can see, we typically bottom out sometime in September, October time period before we get the first dose of our evolorm tax. And typically, we have a lot of money by the end of November in terms of what's in our LGIP fund and stuff like that. So, you can see, we earned the majority of our interest income during this time period, starting typically in November, October through May and June. But you can see, though, with that being the majority of the collections, you can see how every month, we are slowly going down in terms of our cash position and fund balance position. Next, we have our revenue detail. Currently, we're at 94.99% collections, and we're at $691 million out of $717 million revised budget. And to put that perspective, here again, you can see 25 versus 24. You can see, we start the month, the year off pretty slow, and again, you can see the collections picks up as we go from November and to the end of the year. Now, this is cumulative, so you're seeing each month as adding on to the previous month as you're going forward.
Mr. Hamill, and it looks like this year, we're consistently a little bit low collections from last year. Can you explain?
Sure. So, the majority of that would be the T V E T money. Also, if we go back and look, it is TVAT, and we're a little behind on interest earned as well. Those are the two main areas.
Can I sell some more colors?
Yes, definitely. This is just a pie chart breakdown of the money collected. So, as we go forward and we present this to you each month, typically, you'll see like in October or November, when we collect the evolorm tax, you'll notice that will probably be like 98% of the money collected that month, but this just kind of gives you a breakdown. We're playing around with this chart, this graph, a little bit. I think what I'm going to do is change the numbers in here to percentages. It might be easier to look at that way, but this kind of gives you an idea of where the money came from in the different areas. This is an interesting chart. This gives you a black budget line, so this is how we budget our data versus the actual collections. As you see, we were slightly behind in October. We caught up in November with a white gap between the lines. Typically, what we do is the cash flow analysis that I do every year, I put it together before we start the year. We have, right now, we've got 10 years of data in there. So, what we do is we take the 10 years of data broken down by month by the different categories, and we average it out to kind of give us, to get rid of the highs and lows. And that's how we use that data to budget each month in terms of collections.
And that shows some incredible accuracy in what your historical data predicts going forward to be that close to it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, on the expense side, we're at 91.19%. We're a little bit ahead of schedule where we were last year. As you can see, we are slightly ahead expense-wise compared to 24, but you can see the, almost a diagonal line, so when we pay, we're paying almost about the same amount of money every month, just because the majority of our payroll, I mean, the majority of our operations is payroll, 90%. So, there was a little bit of 10%, 9% difference in operations. Most of the fixed costs, when it comes to like gasoline, water, stuff like that, that's pretty monthly as well. There's some small inflections in there, but that's mostly where we pay some stuff upfront at the beginning of the year and towards the end, the beginning of the year for timing issues for buying different items. Now, here, we have the breakdown pie chart again, and just one thing to point out, you'll always notice that instruction will always be the biggest part of your pie chart, because that's where the majority of our money is budgeted every year. And here again, we have a breakdown of the budget versus actual, and that just gives you an idea of how close we're predicting our budget versus actually what we're spending. It's almost dead on. At the end of May, we had about, excuse me, I've got to pull this out now. We had about $890,000 in the LGIP fund for debt service, and this time last year, we had about 5.1. Right now, we only got about 5.5 in SPOSS 6 investment money, and we had about 39 last year. In total, we have about 6.4 versus 52. We're spending the SPOSS 6 money pretty fast as we're getting it in, just because we're getting the tail end of SPOSS 6, and we have the large chunk of money being spent during the time period because of the different clusters we're working on. And debt service, when we lowered the millage rate and we reserved the money out of the general fund and SPOSS 5 to help along, what we're doing is we're keeping that money in general fund, and we're keeping that money in SPOSS 5, and only bringing it over as we need it. So, we're keeping a very low balance right now in debt service. For special revenue funds, the amount of money for this time of the year to be spent is, on average, when we look at a capital project and school food services, right now, we're about $25 million for capital projects in total. We're about $15 million last year. Currently, we're at $21.5 for school nutrition, and we were about $23.8 last year for that. On the investment summary, we are at a healthy $134 million for general fund, but you'll notice that the red is the money we're moving to operations. We'll be moving about $26 million to about $30 million every month as we get closer to the end of September, beginning of October, and taking that funds down. Last year, we had about $126 million. And again, debt service, school nutrition, and SPOSS are all lower than they were last year. One thing I'm thinking about doing is trying to figure out how to do a chart for SPOSS to kind of give you an idea. One thing I thought about is maybe I would take SPOSS 5 and 6 and compare it to SPOSS 7, just to give you an idea of how the difference is in collections. So, I'll be playing around with a graph like that to give you an idea of how those collections looked in the past. But currently, we're at $187 million collection versus the same time last year at about $179, so you can see the funds have gone up a little bit. Right now, we are predicting to be collecting six months in advance, but we're only like $900,000 ahead of schedule for the last quarter. So, if we collect a little bit less that last quarter, that means we'll limp into three months instead of the six-month prepayment period. On the cash disbursements for elementary, the activities number for this time of the year, we had about $4.5 million last year at this time. And for middle schools and high school, the activity for receipts and disbursements is normal for this time of the year. Middle schools, we had about 1.8 last year, and the high schools, we had about 6.9. The breakdown in terms of the cash balances for all the different areas stayed pretty much the same from the previous year, and that is it. So, my question is, is do you think the graphs are something that you would enjoy seeing? And we can always work on some other ones as well.
I like it. I think it makes it a lot easier to understand, especially for the public that's not used to seeing it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that's the financials for May 2025. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamill.
All right. Next up is Mr. Matt Work with SPOSS 7 proposed projects.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to present on SPOSS 7. Go ahead and start this. I believe later in the agenda tonight, there's a SPOSS for referendum to go to the voters, possibly in November, for SPOSS 7. We're currently in SPOSS 6 now, so just to kind of go through a few things, in general, what is SPOSS? I always get this wrong, so I'm glad it's typed out. Special purpose, local option, sales tax. This is the penny sales tax that comes to the school system that anyone that shops in Forsyth County contributes to. And the beauty of this is that it's not all on the backs of the residents.
And often, we'll see this as an e-SPOSS, right? Some people use that interchangeably. I just think it's important for the public to know, if you see an e-SPOSS, that means education SPOSS, correct?
Yes, and that was my next line, is it gets very confusing, and I had a great parent of an LSC ask me at one of my meetings. She said, "How much of the penny do we get?" And I said politely, "I don't understand your question." She said, "Well, we got to have roads and bridges and stuff, right?" And I said, "Great question. This is an e-SPOSS. We get 100% of that penny." The T SPOSS is a totally different piece, so it was great. So, now, I make sure I add that part into every LSC meeting, because to make sure they understand there is a difference, that this is 100% educational SPOSS. So, again, it's nice to know, especially as a resident myself, that it does not fall solely on the residents, homeowners. Real quick, what's the difference between SPOSS and bonds? This is also very important that we know the difference of this. SPOSS is our monthly intake, our revenue that comes in every month. Larry presents that, every month, talking about what our average intake and revenue is off SPOSS. That's what we collect from that penny. We're averaging right around $5 million. That will come in a little bit later in this presentation about how we project. So, again, it's been great for SPOSS 6, because Mr. McCall always reminds me that we're not, we're paying as we go, and we're not doing loans. So, that brings me to the second part of bonds. Bonds are the same thing as your home loan. It's a loan that you have to pay back with interest over time. So, we are very fortunate, and I thank the board and Mr. Young and Dr. Bearden in previous SPOSS, to where we've been able to lay out our projects and be able to stagger them to a point to where we didn't have to do bonds or loans, which is a great thing for the community. We don't have to continue to raise the bond millage rate. We can continuously work our way through that. And I'm going to kind of present tonight on SPOSS 7, because I would anticipate after talking with all of you, I think we could continue that pattern. And I don't feel SPOSS 7, we would need that bond, so I think it's a great pattern to do as well, not to continue that. But that's the difference between SPOSS and bonds. SPOSS successes, I'll be honest with you, there's so many. We all go out and see in our district how many things the SPOSS dollars are paid for. It's just one quick reminder, SPOSS is not paid for people. It's all capital. So, again, it's great for our voters and our community to see, because everything is tied to something that's very tangible that you can see. So, there's no salaries, no benefits, anything can be paid out of SPOSS. It's all capital. But I will tell you, the one thing I do want to say is that SPOSS, it's capital, but it also helps keep our general fund lower, because when we can go out and do a lot of projects using SPOSS dollars, especially my department, that's things that break, and we have to fix that, it's nice to kind of aim my budget on just fixing and repairing, but when we need to do some projects, it's nice to be able to have the SPOSS dollars and not have to go to general fund. So, that kind of gets lost in that, but it's a good reminder that it does affect our general fund in keeping it lower. The next is only one slide on SPOSS 6. I'm very proud again of my department and how we've done things and serving the district to where we're moving into our last year of SPOSS 6. These are the final 15 schools that will start getting their SPOSS 6 work, starting in August. We're starting to get numbers coming in and signing contractors. This is their year of getting all their work and having to live through a lot of construction. There's 13 schools right now that are, can't wait for August 1st, because then they're done. So, it's been a long time, but our schools have been amazing to work with. So, again, just, it's a good segue into SPOSS 7, because we pride ourselves on finishing on time and completing all the projects that we've said we were going to do. So, again, these are the last ones. Yes?
What types of projects are those that you are doing at these schools under SPOSS 6?
Under SPOSS 6, majority of it is HVAC, electrical, a lot of infrastructure is what I would say. There's a lot of water heaters, like I said, HVAC things, hand dryers, a lot of more of your infrastructure that's been put on the back burner, because in previous years, we needed so many new schools, that gobbles up majority of your money. So, with SPOSS 6, we were able to go in and just kind of start those infrastructure upgrades through that. Does that answer your question? Cool. All right. 2025 SPOSS 7. As I mentioned, we'll be going back to the voters with your permission to a referendum to have them vote on SPOSS 7, November 4 of 2025. Very important line on this slide is that it's a continuation. It is not a new tax. This tax, if you think about it, I'm not a mathematician, but SPOSS 7 comes around every five years. That can tell you how long SPOSS has been approved in this community. And it is not only Forsyth County, it is all the way across the state, that SPOSS is a great funding revenue source for many school districts. But again, the key word on this slide is it's a continuation. It is not a new tax. Okay. With this slide, I'm going to hold for a minute and talk through one specific need, because we're now going into the list of SPOSS 7 projects. And just like SPOSS 6, going back to what you said, Chris, was that now we were doing a bunch of infrastructure, was very different, because many SPOSS and bonds before, we were building all new schools and things of that nature. So, SPOSS 6 is very different based on the type of projects we're doing. SPOSS 7 is going to be a little bit different about how we stagger our projects. There is a collections Larry continuously reminds us every month about, he just said it, how we're collecting early. We're collecting more and more money. We're a little ahead of schedule. Well, there is a negative to that, that if we over-collect, we get cut off. So, that's a big penalty, that if we set our standard too low, that we are worried about too much collection. And the problem is, over five years, we don't know what's going to happen in the community. You know what I mean? We could have an O8 again, things of that nature, or things flourish and we start collecting a lot faster. So, the theory, as we have spoken before, and I've kind of presented, is we're going to raise that extension to where it's a little bit higher of a cap, so that we don't worry about that penalty coming down to the last year and then not being able to finish our collections. So, that's kind of, now that's going to fall into a different campaign that we need to do with SPOSS 7. We're going to have a list of projects based on the priority as we feel moving into this next five years. So, what I would say is the font colors matter. And when I presented this to principals, it's very important that they focused on that, because that's how we're going to present that to our communities. So, first is the red, which is our critical needs, which we feel is a massive priority for our district going into SPOSS 7. And also by that, we truly feel that the dollar amount that we're projecting will absolutely be collected. We feel very confident that everything that's going to be listed in red, we will be able to complete. Going into the blue is a high needs, which we know is extremely important. We also feel that our revenues in the SPOSS 7, we'll be able to complete all the blue list. We feel very confident in that. Now, when we move into the gold section, this is where we need to do a great job, and Michelle Dugan's doing a great job with communications already, talking to our principals about, this is a list that we have down as needs, but we have to wait to see how that revenue comes in. If we keep our collections high, we will continue to move through this list and complete projects. But there is a chance, if we run into a recession or some type of low collections, that some things on the gold list, we may not have funding for. So, that's just a little bit different, because in previous SPOSS, everything on the list, we always got done. So, this is a little bit different of a campaigning. Should I stop there? Any questions on that? All right?
I do want to just say that sometimes dynamics change, and something that maybe on the blue may become red, something that was on the red may drop down, so we're not locked in with this. The language of the resolution we're going to present to you is very broad.
Yes, sir. And the reason for that is exactly that. We don't list in the referendum, "We're going to build a new school," let's just say, because what happens in two years, maybe that enrollment completely drops and our needs change. So, this is what our internal list is, is this is what we feel is our needs moving into that. But the referendum, we always want to stay somewhat generic, because things change and throughout. Okay? Great question. All right. So, looking at, again, looking at the font colors, and also, I have to remind our principals of this, there's a line underneath there. These are not listed in specific order, because some people say, "Wait a minute, I'm at the bottom." But we talked through this. Again, everything in the red, we feel very confident that we need it right away, as well as we'll be able to fund it. As you can see, I'm just going to go through a few of these. Safety, we all know safety is a very important key. So, what safety is, is there'll be a dollar amount allocated for safety, and then we leave it up to the safety department of Todd Shirley, Steve Hawn, to decide what the best use of those dollars are. So, they're not as specific as what I am with my things. So, like another item is a new elementary school. We all know the growth that we're seeing on the northwest corner with Pools Mill and Mat and those type of schools. So, we're, right now, we feel that that is a definite need in SPOSS 7. Then, the difference is now moving down, you'll see a bunch of additions at three middle schools, Liberty North and Otwell, and then Denmark Lambert and South High. The reason for this is, we all know where we have our modular units, where we're seeing that growth. Our high schools continue to, you know, grow, even though we're slowing a little bit in the elementaries, that people are still coming for our high schools, and that's a great thing. Also, working with you guys as a board, you're allowing us to go a little bit larger in our capacities. Before, we kind of kept some caps on our elementary, our middle, and our high, but working with you all, I had some great ideas about possibly taking our smaller schools. So, Liberty North and Otwell are three middle schools that their capacity is only 1,000 kids. Where now Hendrix that we just built, Lakeside, Riverwatch, South Middle, their capacities are right around 1,500. So, we need to go ahead. It's a great idea that you all were talking through about taking these three smaller middle schools where we're seeing that growth, and then putting additions on to make their capacities right at 1,600. Same with the high schools. We've always operated around 2,400 is kind of a cap, but these three schools, moving them to 3,100 would be a great deal of help with them.
Mr. Work, is it safe to say that one of the benefits of SPOSS, in addition to keeping us debt-free, is this is insurance against high school, middle school redistricting?
working with you all, I had some great ideas about possibly taking our smaller schools. So Liberty North and Otwell are three middle schools that their capacity is only 1,000 kids. Where now Hendrix that we just built, Lakeside, Riverwatch, South Middle, their capacities are right around 1,500. So we need to go ahead. It's a great idea that you all were talking through about taking these three smaller middle schools where we're seeing that growth, and then it's putting additions on to make their capacities right at 1,600. Same with the high schools. We've always operated around 2,400 is kind of a cap. But these three schools, moving them to 3,100 would be a great deal of help with them.
Mr. Work, is it safe to say that one of the benefits of SPOSS, in addition to the, to keeping us debt free, is this is insurance against high school, middle school redistricting?
He keeps stealing my thunder, so I'm just going to keep going. There's two very good things about doing additions. One is, yeah, I mean, we haven't even talked about this. It's kind of shocking. The two things that are really good about doing additions, one is cost versus additions versus new. Just as a point of reference, we just built Midway Elementary School, which was the same design as Pools Mill. The rough difference of cost is between $24 million for Pools Mill to close to 35 for Midway. So the cost of new square footage is just becoming astronomical. So being able to do additions, especially in schools that can take those additions, it's worth every penny to look at doing the additions before we go until we need a new school, which on the north end, we really believe we need that, but these additions are great. And then the second thing, Dr. Young, is very true. With additions, we feel like we can keep the kids that are there and we don't have to go through a redistricting process, which is a great thing, especially for our high schools, because we all know redistricting a high school is a lot of heartache. Just like in elementary, not one is worse than the other, but when you do high schools, you have athletics and clubs and things of that nature, it just becomes a lot harder and you're going into feeders. We're going to stay with the red list. Again, more things that are coming on. This is an interesting one that we've been talking through and done a lot of research with is putting AstroTurf on our, every high school's baseball softball field, and then turfing a practice football field for any high school that does not have one. We all know we built East High with one, so we're trying to go back and make sure that those things are all compatible. Talking through baseball softball, I know people have asked me about this and the research that goes into this. There's so many things that we could list and talk through from what we do on a maintenance side from grass, what we pay on that, from water usage, from irrigation issues, things of that nature. But ultimately, it comes down to usage. And believe it or not, by doing AstroTurf, this makes our baseball and softball not a one sport field. Because right now, if I told the band at Forsyth Central to go march on the baseball field and practice, it would kill all the grass, absolutely instantly with the 90 degree heat. When you go to AstroTurf, look at our football fields. They are constantly used. Lacrosse, soccer, football, flag football, everyone's on it. So now, baseball, for sure, we all see Yankee Stadium, things of that nature. It's larger than a football field when you look at square footage. When I went to visit other schools that have already done this, I actually went and I went to one school and they had it lined for football. And I said, well, why do you have the lines out? And they said, well, now we can have two practices at the same time. JV practices over here, varsity practices over here. So again, it's actually adding multi-use fields. Now, baseball and softball can be used for lacrosse practice, football, they can break up more drills. We don't have to have, you know, lacrosse, soccer, flag football. Our community can now use it a lot more because again, the more wear and tear you have on them, our baseball and softball coaches are very particular of their fields. And again, we want them to have fantastic fields and grass these days are, it's just restricts our use. So it actually will work in reverse, where people think this is more of just for baseball and softball. Our PE teachers are extremely excited about this because now they don't have to fight for field space. So again, there's so many more uses for this. But are there any questions about baseball softball? And I will tell you, neighboring counties have already started to do this. Some of our neighboring counties, I don't want to ruin their SPOSS list, but they've told me they have, also have it in their SPOSS to retrofit all of their schools the same way. So this is definitely a trend that's moving forward.
Well, I just think it's important that it's not just, like, I think that's a great point you brought, Matt. It's now multiple sports that can use these fields year round instead of just one sport.
Exactly.
I think that's important, an important piece.
And I think the other piece is too, that's not left untold, is now we're able to allow rentals of these facilities. Now we can host more perfect game tournaments, things of that nature, or anything else we could use these fields. And to be honest with you, we've actually talked to our park and rec about this to kind of help out with some of theirs. Because rain days are also a massive issue. So when your park and rec gets rained out and they can't host games, we can work as a partnership to where, hey, now we have a facility that they can return the very next day. So we actually went to park and rec and said, hey, is this something that you all would support? Could we, you know, and they're definitely, and if you know our parks and recs, they're actually starting to do one of these. Up on the north end has a turf field. I believe Sharon's Park is going to have at least one field that they're moving to turf. So this is definitely something that's being done. Okay? And the last part of the red is also, we want to look at doing an allocation for our elementary schools to have some type of turf put on their playgrounds. I say this all the time, is there's 1,000 little feet all over our playgrounds. And the second it stops raining, they're out there playing. So keeping grass to grow on our playgrounds, this has come up. I know some of you board members have talked to me about this in the past. I think this is a great way to move forward with an allocation. I want to be very clear this, because I had some elementary principals about go berserk. You're going to turf my playgrounds? No, I'm going to give you an allocation and we'll get started to a section. So if you can look, it's about 12,000 square feet. We average that to about, cost today is about $100,000 worth of turf. And what we're going to do is we will allow the schools to have the autonomy about where that goes. I won't force them to put it in one area. Some schools are like, this would be great on my K2 playground. Or this would be great over my open area for soccer, because that's where the kids always want to play. We will allow that. The other reason for the allocations, because some of our schools have already done this. Haw Creek, Vicry Elementary, they've already started and have, Sony Elementary has a lot of turf. So we don't want to come in and do other schools because some have already invested their money. We're just going to add to those. And a lot of elementary said they're already fundraising. So when we start this, they're going to put their money with it and they're going to do a lot more. So it's a really good thing. And they're excited about this. PTAs, PTOs, schools, elementary's are just ecstatic about this portion. Questions about that? All right. Now we'll move on to the blue. Again, this is a high priority that we still believe are big needs, and we believe we'll have the funding in SPOSS to do them. Fine arts and CTE expansions at these five middle schools. Now, some say, why aren't you doing all 11? There's five here. Remember, we're doing additions at three other middle schools. So we will incorporate their fine arts and CTE in their addition. So that's eight. And then the last three are the newer our middle schools, and they already have the fine arts and CTE incorporated. These are just the five, like Vicry Middle we're doing now. So again, that's why we only have five. So the rest of them are not being left out, but. High needs also IT. Just like safety and security, we kind of keep this vague because their needs may change between Chromebooks to tablets or looking at projection screens, things of that nature. Fine arts, again, this is mostly equipment upgrades, STEM is equipment. Transportation, this is a big deal too, to remind people that we buy buses out of the SPOSS dollars. And then FFE, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. This has been very popular, what we're doing too, Chris, going back to what you were saying. We've been doing a lot of furniture upgrades in SPOSS six as well, which is a great thing for our schools because a lot of that's been put on the back burner for a while. So that's another thing that we've been doing with SPOSS six. And then the last part of our high needs, maintenance lifecycle. Again, this is your electrical plumbing and carpentry. This is your, these trades, this would incorporate painting, flooring, things of that nature that we would do. More HVAC lifecycle. And then this last piece is...
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. Usherwood, all in favor. Not sure the verbiage was correct there, but the spirit and intent is certainly accurate.
To finish out where we ended with the blue category, which is still our high needs, again, not listed in a specific order. The last item we were talking about was, is now we do believe that the post-road widening has been, is starting to move forward to where we need to put some money in there to realign the Vicry Elementary and Middle School front entrances. This was put back in the 2015 SPOSS and bonds, but the post-road widening got delayed. So we, but now we believe through the county and telling us where they are in post-road, we think it's time to put that amount back in. All right, before we go into gold, are we okay with everything in the red and the blue? All right, again, one final reminder, the gold is, these are things that we still feel are a priority, but again, based on we have to wait to see how that revenue comes. But as Dr. Young has said, that things may change, our needs may change, and we may move something from gold up into the red and blue. We just had to categorize things the way we felt as they are today. The Cold Mountain addition is one on the future needs. This, again, continue to absorb continued growth. This also matters based on the first slide of the new elementary school about where that relief could come from. So again, this is something that if we can't relieve too much, this is another item we can do. More CTE refresh of their equipment and materials, more HVAC lifecycle replacement, a maintenance facility due to the limited space and limited acreage. We're currently located on 20, and we have outgrown that space. Again, this is way down the list. I would, anything school-based will absolutely come first. Anything based for curriculum and safety, that will all come first. This is just a need. That's why it's on this list. As well as the very last item, that's, we always add in some type of inflation cost because we all have no idea of a crystal ball or what's going to happen. We put budgets together for these projects, but as we know over five years, these things can change very drastically. And this is actually, again, going back to the color codes, this is what the principals have received. They took this from our leadership retreat. So they have a reference. And again, as you can see, it's color coded, so they know how to decipher from the different projects, priorities, things of that nature. But this is just a summary sheet of what we reviewed. And then with the light still on, I will be happy to answer any questions, clarifications, and go from there.
Do you want to tell them what the dollar amount is we're looking at?
Right now, we're projected to be, we're putting in our referendum just under $400 million over the five years for that collection. Currently in SPOSS six, we're set at 300 million. So we're, you know, looking at trend data. We don't make that number up just to add it. We do look at finance, we look at those trend data. We're also looking at our collections most recently as we see them climb. So we're, we're going to put the referendum, I believe, is just shy of 400 million.
And Matt, I think it's also important to note too, that a lot of those big projects that are front loaded into this, take a lot of money. So we may not see movement right at the beginning of a SPOSS collection period, because if we're going to pay as we go, we've got to accumulate that money before we can start.
And I want to be very clear, you bring up a good point. Once the referendum passes in November, which we're hoping for, we will come back together again and have more conversations with you as board members, Dr. Young, our cabinet. And we'll start looking at, okay, now we need to start laying out how these might, you know, be put out there. Do we go with safety right away? Do we go with the school? Do we do an addition? Because things will change from today through November. Because we also pride ourselves about getting designs done well early enough. So the day we get the money enough to do it, we're ready to start building. We don't want to wait, get the money, then we start designing. We go ahead and do that on the front end.
So I just wanted you to address the one elementary school in the northwest side of the county. Currently, right now, Pools Mill has how many trailers?
They're adding two more. They'll have a total of 10 at the start of the school year.
That school's only about four years old, three years old? And it's already has 10, four years old, it's already had 10 trailers?
Yes, sir.
Matt Elementary also has trailers, 10 trailers?
Yes, sir.
And Sony Elementary?
12.
Okay, right there.
Cold Mountain?
Yeah. So that's a huge need for that elementary school.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll reserve my comments for the resolution on what I think about this SPOSS. So thank you.
Thank you.
Members, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Work, for the exciting presentation.
Appreciate it.
Theatrics and everything.
Yeah. Thank you all.
All right, that takes us to the action item portion of our agenda. First up is Dr. Amy Bartlett with policy JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices by Students.
Well, good evening. It's great to be back. About a month ago, I stood here and shared with you our proposed policy related to the Distraction-Free Education Bill that's gone through our legislation. And this proposed policy would fit under JCDAF, which is Use of Electronic Devices by Students. As we know, this really impacts our governance, governance goals related to social and emotional health, as well as the learner experience. And as we shared last month, we have been working on this all year long. And not to go back and be too redundant, but we have really been intentional about collecting stakeholder feedback along the way in many, many contexts and many forums. I think, Mr. Grimes, you mentioned earlier, local school council feedback. Dr. Young has been out to all of our schools to talk with our stakeholders, as well as our advisory committees. And that culminated with a town hall in April. And going into that town hall and right after that town hall, we did have a survey that went out. It was one of our largest responses that we've had in quite some time. From that survey, we heard from over 3,700 respondents. And from those results, we overwhelmingly heard strong support for restricting or limiting cell phone usage during the school day. There were comments in that feedback that really wanted to know what our plan was for contacting their children still during the school day, having some contingency pieces in place for that. And really overwhelmingly came forward, they wanted a balanced approach. While they see this as an issue, they felt like we just need to consider the whole context and have a balanced approach. So going into that, we came back to you last month and presented our proposed policy, which we'll get into. That has sat for 30 days. And during those 30 days, I want to present to you this evening, additional feedback that's come in in those 30 days. During this time, we have heard from an additional 298 respondents. You can see at the top there, overwhelmingly, 100% positive was 56% of the results. 166 of those comments supported the policy as is. What we classify as neutral feedback was 41%. And we'll get into that in just a little bit. And negative feedback was very, very limited, only 2% with seven responses in that classification. Some important things to note are the key themes identified. There was widespread recognition that there's negative impact on phones, on student focus and well-being. The pieces that came in, when we talk about the neutral feedback, you'll see highlighted there in yellow. They really want to see consistent enforcement across the board, across all of our schools, and very clear expectations. And not just for our students, but for our staff as well. That was a recurring theme through this feedback. There was a desire for transparency and ongoing communication through the implementation. So our parents saying, how are we going to very clearly message this out to our stakeholders into our community? And there was a bit of a mixed perception in that neutral feedback on a balance between complete restriction K-12 and limited access during specific times. As we'll get into, our legislation requires the complete restriction K-8. So the question was in the 912 space, if we go with complete restriction bell to bell, or give that limited access during the specific time, which was in the proposal during the lunchtime. Also, there was a recognition of a need for very clear staff training and what the processes would be for handling when there were violations. So as a conclusion, we do feel that the stakeholder feedback reflected strong support for our policy, with most respondents aligned with our intent to create a more focused academic environment, and the comments suggesting thoughtful implementation guidance, flexibility and enforcement. And that especially came from those neutral respondents. So just as a reminder, this really is grounded and aligned, this policy with Georgia House Bill 340, which is our Distraction-Free Education Act. As we've talked about previously, this legislation does require those restrictions grade K through eight. Our policy is looking at what we want to do as a school system, not just in line with House Bill 340, but as a K-12 school system. So with that, I'm just going to revisit our proposed policy. You'll note tonight, this evening, it is the same as we presented in May with one slight addition, which will be highlighted in yellow on the next screen. But just as a review, we want to ensure distraction-free environments, limiting cell phones and personal electronic communication devices to ensure students can focus on their learning and engage in positive interactions to support their well-being. Our recommended guidelines for elementary and middle in alignment with House Bill 340 is that all cell phones and personal electronic devices would be turned off and stored away during the bell-to-bell school day. And it is noted there that those restrictions do not apply to buses, bus stop, or school grounds before and after school. At the high school level, we're proposing that all devices and cell phones are turned off and stored away during bell-to-bell, with the exception that students may access those devices during their assigned lunch period. Again, noting that these restrictions do not apply to the buses or school grounds before and after the bell-to-bell day. Here, we outlined the expectations that students must comply with those directives. Here, we outlined the expectations that students must comply with those directives or they may be subject to disciplinary actions in compliance with our code of conduct. And we also want to note that students should always respect privacy of others and it encourages them not to take photos or videos of other, um, students or staff members without prior, prior approval. Um, additionally, it was important to note expectation and number three for our staff members as well, that our employees will be expected to model responsible use of their own cell phones and personal electronic devices. There is a portion in the proposed policy for students with disabilities and that may need other accommodations. Specifically, we talk about our students that may be diabetic or have a need for those devices at times. And it's noted that a student that has an IEP or 504 plan or medical plan that explicitly mandates a use of that, that those provisions would be made. And notifications, we want to make sure that our parents and our guardians are informed of these policies and procedures, uh, related to this practice. The only addition to when we presented to you in May is highlighted in yellow at the bottom, and this is at the guidance of GSBA. Right now, they're in the process of putting out some, um, exemplar statements that, that districts might want to consider in their policy. And this was one of those. We felt like our policy was pretty comprehensive, but this was a statement that we feel would be applicable and warranted to put in our policy. And that is the district or individual schools within the district shall not assume any responsibility or liability for theft, loss, or damage to a personal electronic device. So again, that statement did come right from GSBA and we thought that was very fitting to include that in our policy. So we are going to put that back to you, our Board of Education, this evening to discuss if we want to move forward with this proposed policy under board, uh, policy JCDAF. It's important to note that if this is approved by you, our Board of Education, our next steps will be outlined here, that we would develop a board regulation that supports that. Some of the things that come in place is what is stored and stored away mean. For example, we may indicate through regulation, it might not be on their person to be vibrating in their pocket. Um, stored away may be in different places. That's the type of thing we would, we would flesh out in regulation that would need to be done once a policy is developed. Additionally, uh, staff handbook, we want to be very clear and consistent in our guidance to our employees here in Forsyth County on the expectations that they have for cell phones as well as our code of conduct, our student and family engagement handbook, and certainly our communication plan. We heard that loud and clear from our parents, that we want a very clear communication plan. So once the policy you, you determine if we would like to move forward with this or, or make any adjustments, these are the next steps, the pieces that we'll be working our, our cabinet. It's a collective, uh, effort from many departments, from school safety, technology, communications, teaching and learning, human resources, that we would be putting these next steps in place in all of these documents, uh, aligning to our board policy. So with that said, I turn it over to you to discuss how we would like to proceed forward with this proposed policy.
Um, and, and ju- just to be clear, the staff has been working on these already. Um, so they've got a lot of these ready to go in, in the case that you do approve this. And Todd is sitting out there with two versions of the code of conduct that he'll present tonight. He was, depending on how you vote with this. So, uh, with thanks to Amy and everybody and all the work they put into this, I, um, I would recommend for approval, uh, the proposed policy JCDAF to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Members, do we have a motion to approve proposed policy JCDAF?
A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. I'm going to open it up now for discussion before the vote. I'll kick it off by saying thank you. I know that this has been a tireless effort for a long time. This didn't begin when the legislator took up the issue. We've been doing this well before. Um, I appreciate that we found, I think, a balance. The high school question was more complex, but, um, I think we have to consider that these kids are, lots of them are adults and most of them are taller than me. I know that that's not a big accomplishment, but they are. They work, they have lives, you know, they're, they're learning to be responsible and be functional adults in society. So allowing some, I think, latitude in the middle of the day where they're at their lunch and they can connect with their necessities, their family, whatever it is, I think that makes a lot of sense. I know there was a lot of discussion in the community about that, but we have to remember that we're preparing young adults to be adults and to function in the world. So I think it's a, it's a fair balance. Um, I just want to clarify that this includes all devices of all types, watches, iPads, laptops, everything, correct?
That is correct, and that will be very clearly notated in the regulation portion that supports the policy. But that is correct.
And I want to say thank you to Dr. Young. He's given us his assurances that through the documents you outlined, that would be , uh, appendices to this policy, that the, the enforcement will be paramount. You know, there's no sense in writing something on paper that we're not going to follow. So I think that's the board expectation and that's Dr. Young's expectation. So, um, I thank the community. We've gotten, you know, nearly 4,000 bits of feedback between one thing and the other, which is a lot. Um, and I think, um, you guys have done a fantastic job and I think, once again, we're, we're leading the way on this. So thank you very much. Anything else, Gus?
That was pretty good.
Thank you, thank you. I worked on that all night. No?
I'll just say, I know that there was, this was a, a huge undertaking and it really feels as though, you know, as we started down this process, I know there was a lot of apprehension as how's the community going to react? But I think based on the turnout at the town hall, the feedback you've received, even after this was put out, uh, for review, that there's overwhelming support. And, and I just want to say again, because this is being recorded, I hope the community understands it's not just enforcement within the schools, it's also enforcement and support within the homes. That's where it's going to count, so.
Anything else? So I'll take the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Mitch Young with the East Plas referendum resolution.
And I am not going to read this, I just want it on display. We sent it to you, uh, to, to have a look at and review, but, uh, based on the language we have here, I think it captures all that Matt, uh, so eloquently presented tonight. Um, and you did a great job with that, Matt, I appreciate it. And, uh, I recommend for approval, the, uh, the resolution that we have before you, uh, to put this to the, to the voters in November.
Members, do we have a motion to adopt East Plas referendum resolution?
Make a motion that we adopt the East Plas referendum, uh, as presented.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Mr. Usherwood. I'll open it up for discussion. I think, Mr. McCall, you had some things you wanted to share.
Yeah, I just want to say that, uh, you know, thank you to the work on this. And I know over the last couple of years, it's been a big shift in the way that we have done Splos's in the past and Bonds in the past, and it's taken a, a lot of work for the staff to do that. So thank you for that. Uh, I believe this is an example of what Splos should be. Uh, you know, it covers growth and we're doing it debt-free. I don't know of any other school system in the state or even in the country, there might be, but I've looked and I can't find any that is doing this debt-free. And we can't collect impact fees, uh, just because the state constitution doesn't allow it. And so this helps with the growth. And by being responsible, and we were talking about it earlier, you know, if we don't add bonds over the next couple of years and we continue this financial, um, you know, stewardship, then the school system can be debt-free by 36. That's huge to have a school system debt-free. Oh, 38, sorry. He can make it 36 if he wants. 38. Um, but I think that's a, a huge accomplishment and, and, uh, this is exactly what Splos should be.
I'll just add to that and say, you know, I'm not a big fan of taxes. I don't know anyone that is, you know? But this is of all taxes, I would say this type of consumption taxes, the fairest type of tax. Most people don't know that 40% of this type of tax gets paid by people that don't live in the county. So if you're talking about a $400 million authorization, that's 160 million that you as homeowners are not paying for, people that don't live here are paying for. Most importantly, I think, not to sound like an echo, but it keeps us debt-free. Uh, debt equals increased mileage rate, so this is an indirect way to lower your taxes on your home in a very meaningful way, where what you, the average consumer would contribute to this is, is not a lot. You would save a lot more by keeping your taxes low on your house. So this enables us to do that by staying debt-free. And I think most importantly, it allows us to stay ahead, like we, we've been trying to do, and stay ahead of growth while still being able to deliver high-performing instructional environments and safe schools. So, um, I'm a, I'm a big fan of this particular East Plas and I'm, I'm ready to put it to the community and take their questions.
I was going to say, I think, two things in here. I think, obviously, anything we can do to improve instruction. Um, but I think, too, to keep our kids safe, you know, when, there's just a lot of changes going on. And I think, you know, the fact that, you know, we listed school safety number one, um, I think is, is probably the most important because keeping our kids safe in a safe environment, um, it's shown that they do better in school. So I think that is important. And also, um, you know, it's, uh, there's several things in here for HVAC upgrades and things like that. And, uh, Matt could probably share the numbers, but, you know, with, with newer technology, it actually becomes cheaper to run our schools. We have big buildings and with newer technology and newer, uh, more modern HVAC equipment, um, Matt, I'm sure you could say some of the HVAC is probably original to those schools. And so, uh, we're replacing, this would replace units and things like that that are, have a good bit of age on them. So it could be, you know, when you look at operating costs, it actually saves us money as well.
We also, just so you know, in reference, is we do asset tag every single piece of equipment that's in this county. So we know how much we're spending on maintenance, repairs, parts, labor, so it kind of justifies as we're changing out these units. Yes, you're 100% correct. A lot of these units are original to their building. Um, we maintain them very well, but this is time to move forward.
Thank you. All right. So if there's no more discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Next up is policy EEC, food service records with Dr. Mitch Young.
At both policy, EEC, that's, uh, well, I guess we need to do these separately. So EEC, there was no feedback, that's been out there for, for 30 days. None of the feedback would, would change my recommendation, so I would go ahead and recommend, uh, the adjustments to policy EEC.
Is there a motion to adopt a policy EEC food service records as presented?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, there were no comments or there were no comments?
I, I don't believe any comments yet. I don't believe any comments came in at all on either on this one or the next one. Yeah.
Questions, comments? I'll go ahead and take the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Next up is policy EEE Wellness Program, again with Dr. Young.
Yep, same, uh, same thing. Uh, my recommendation is to approve the adjustments made to policy EEE.
Is there a motion to adopt policy EEE Wellness Program as presented?
Make a motion to adopt as presented.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. Usherwood. Is there any discussion? No? I'll go ahead and take the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. And next up is the 2025-2026 Code of Conduct with Mr. Todd Shirley, the man in black.
Make sure you have the right version now, Todd. Make sure you have the right version.
I moved it from where Suzie put it so that I would know that I would open the right one. Okay. Uh, first of all, I do want to say thank you to the board for adopting the Distraction-Free Education Policy. It is my hope that a year from now, uh, student support and school safety can stand in front of you and say that we have seen a dis- a decline in, in our, um, threat assessments. Um, and hopefully, we can directly connect it to this. I'm not going to go through the entire code of conduct that David presented for you again. I do want to show you the one change that we made, and it is based on your, um, adopting the policy that was, uh, the, the distraction-free policy. Uh, basically, what we did is under number 16, Electronic Entertainment, uh, we eliminated the old verbiage and we did a straight copy and paste of the policy that you have just adopted to give additional teeth to that. The statement that you see below that was already presented to you last month, which goes in line with the policy, uh, just to reinforce, um, students are prohibited from using cell phones or any recording devices to record school officials or other students because we have seen such a spike in that over the last few years. So with that, I would ask, or I would answer any questions, uh, and I would ask Dr. Young if he would recommend to the board approval of the 2025-26 Code of Conduct.
I will, but I want to, on the record, promise Ms. Hoise that, um, Dr. Dugan is going through anything that we put out publicly, just to make sure we've got everything grammatically cleaned up and, and all that stuff. So I'm saying that publicly, that Dugans is on top of that with, with, uh, Mr. Shirley's team, correct?
That, that always goes through, yes, it goes through, uh, Dr. Dugan and, uh, they, she has to reformat everything. We have to get it ready for printing, but it also goes through extra eyes for everything.
And with, with that, I recommend for approval, the, uh, changes to the 25-26 Code of Conduct.
Members, do we have a motion to adopt the changes to the 2025-26 Code of Conduct as presented?
I'll make the motion to adopt the changes to the Code of Conduct for the 25-26 school year.
A motion by Mr. McCall, second by Mr. Usherwood. Is there any discussion? Nope. All right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. That brings us to the points of information on our agenda. Um, everybody should have received their documents. Any questions, comments, concerns? Here none, we will move on to the public portion, the public participation, uh, portion of our agenda. And we have one speaker tonight, Mr. Jared Rochelle.
Our little buzzers now weren't so, if, if you want, I'll keep it. Oh, did you find it?
Yeah.
Times two. Thank you. Today is my 47th school board talk in a row. It would have been 48, but the first time I arrived, I didn't realize I had to sign up first. I regret to inform the board that I'll be missing our next meeting in July due to other conflicts, but when I come back, I'll try to run up the streak to at least 50. In my first talk, August 17th, 2021, I stated the following in regards to various controversies swirling in school systems across the country. Pro-individual, pro-American conservative voices need to be given an equitable voice and must be included in the process. Now, part of the historical reason these voices have been hard to find is that hard-working, responsible people don't have a lot of time to spend engaging in activism or protesting. They're too busy caring for and providing for their families. And apparently, all the corrupt USAID-linked NGO grants only funded radicals on one side of the political spectrum. I made a commitment to myself to treat these school board meetings as a personal priority so I could speak up for the silent, responsibly working majority, as well as reach out to those on the other side to try to find a working respect for each other, if not actual common ground. While I'm sure at times I've been at least a little controversial, I've worked hard to be filled with love and compassion, even for those I've disagreed with. And in retrospect, given where we have arrived today, it has definitely been worth the ride. Dr. Mitch Young is a phenomenal bridge builder who balances the interests of both the center-left and the center-right. But he's unabashedly and proudly pro-American, and for that, I am incredibly grateful the board considered my recommendation for him as superintendent back on January 16th, 2024. I've never expected him to believe every single thing, I believe, but he's always been an attentive listener and has a track record of caring and competence I've been pleased to observe over the past four years. And the school board today, I believe, exemplifies the all-American virtues of personal responsibility, judging people on merit rather than superficial affinity groups, and building a culture that reduces resentment and increases gratitude. We truly have the right people with the right ideas at the right time to shake off the chaos of the recent culture wars and build a better school system for everyone. And so, my unexpected journey has led me from disagreeing with Dr. Young about whether or not to call them government schools or public schools, to a recent interaction where I found myself defending the district to a good, down-to-earth conservative friend from church who knew someone working in the district during the height of the culture wars. This particular district teacher, from time to time, would worry that their statements of scientific fact to student questions like, "There are only two sexes," would put them at risk of discipline. And they were sure that gobs of money were being wasted for DEI hires and programs unrelated to core student instruction. Their impression was not only was the superintendent woke, but the whole school board as well, and that our finances were allocated to wasteful ideological pursuits. Well, not being one to shy away from confrontation, I went into a whirlwind of corrections form. Yes, the district did once have a DEI program linked to anti-American, anti-individual, and anti-conservative groups, but this was slowly and surely eliminated after the toxic nature of those groups was exposed, despite well-funded leftist activist protests. And yes, there may have been some very compassionate previous board members who didn't quite recognize the deceptive- the deceptive nature of using benign words like diversity, equity, and inclusion to generate resentment and divisiveness. But today, we have an incredibly diverse board that understands equity is not equality, and inclusion has to include conservatives, too. Last but not least, while Larry Hamel might not have the most riveting portion of these school board meetings, after watching him 48 times give his detailed presentations of the budget, and observing both his integrity and transparency time and time again, I had plenty to say about how the school board has been managing our valuable taxpayer resources. While we should always be trying to increase the percentage of the budget going to instruction, 73% for 2026 is an impressive number in comparison to 58% to 65% from our surrounding school districts. And the ability for our district to plan and execute facility expansions without taking on more debt is frankly mind-boggling. After living in two deep-blue states, Hawaii and California, where they are completely unable to maintain any sort of fiscal discipline for anything, being in a state and county that takes its finances seriously is incredible. And so, in a little less than four years, I've gone from Forsyth County School District skeptic to a Forsyth County School District defender. I've been blessed to have been able to move to a free state after living for decades under a progressively repressive regime, and managed to land in arguably the best county in that free state. For all my dear friends on the left who believe I'm misguided, or malicious, or crass, or phobic in some way or another, I hope they can appreciate that none of the pendulum swing back to the center is motivated by vengeance. I truly believe the compassionate liberals among us are incredibly valuable for bringing up problems that conscientious conservatives might not notice. But once those problems are noticed, the best and most effective solutions will come from those conscientious conservatives, which is where we are today. We have a compassionate superintendent, a conscientious school board, and things look brighter in Forsyth County every day because of it. I want to thank our board and every single district employee, from Dr. Young down to the newest paraprofessional, for all the great work they did here. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right. That brings us to the end of the program tonight, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Usherwood, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.